Good evening and welcome to the Salem City Council work session this evening for Monday, November 15th. The council will be working on the 2022 council policy agenda. Now, if the, um, excuse me, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Counselor Hoy?
I'm of approval of the special meeting. Sorry, I'm of approval of the special meeting agenda.
All second.
Second by Stapleton. In discussion, all those in favor, recorder, if you'd please call the roll.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay, we'll move on then. Our agenda this evening really is discussion of the 2022 council policy agenda. I'm going to turn this over to Colleen Rosillas from Moss Adams to take us through this discussion. So, Colleen, do you want to take over here?
Sure thing. Happy to. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share my screens. Give me just a moment to do that. And for my computer to catch up. Okay, there we go. All right. So, tonight, we are here for essentially one purpose. We're going to discuss our priorities for next budget year. You've gotten a number of documents that have helped you to be able to review our progress. Steve and I will also provide you with a little bit of an update and presentation here, but we want to be able to spend most of the time just discussing. So, we want to be able to have an informed conversation about our priorities moving forward. We also want to consider the city's role in some key initiatives, really talk about what our role is in homelessness and some of those other really big initiatives going forward. Some of those key priorities that we established last year in the strategic plan and identify what we intend to focus on moving forward. I thought I might remind you of something that we talked about when we met back in April and May at a couple of trainings, where we talked about why we're all here on council, which was to serve and shape our community. And this is one of those really great opportunities. You know, we have kind of the day-to-day governing and the really busy work that we do. Tonight is one of those opportunities to really step back and think we are really shaping our community going forward, shaping our budgetary priorities and making these long-term decisions. So, tonight is one of those nights and that we will be doing that. So, here we are. We're at that top-left corner in this diagram. We're in annual community report. We're doing financial forecasting, receiving the residential satisfaction survey, and identifying those potential policy priorities. You will have another work session in January or February to finalize the priorities, and then you will work on the budget moving forward in the springtime. So, speaking of progress on priorities, I'm going to hand it over to Steve to give you an update.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Mayor and counselors, for your time this evening. I think you really have, through your policy leadership, helped shape the community. And I'm going to touch on a few of those from this current year. And hopefully, this will help inform you as you consider what to continue into 2022 and what additions to consider. Your priorities in 2021 really were homelessness, community resiliency, equity, especially when it comes to city services, building great neighborhoods, and climate change. Addressing homelessness, assisted by the state legislature, assisted by our share of the American Relief Program Act. I think, again, we've helped shape the community, respond to a sheltering crisis, first with our efforts at sheltering in the parks, and more recently, the $8.1 million of ARPA money that's gone to new shelter beds and safe park locations. The city has purchased a navigation center. We've helped UGM add capacity. We've helped the Community Action Agency with its motel program. We've added managed shelter on Portland Road. And through our partnership with the Salem Housing Authority, have added 37 units of permanent supportive housing at Redwood Crossing. Community resiliency, you know, this really, I think, speaks to our response to the pandemic and helping the community with its response to the pandemic. Specifically, over $680,000 has been provided by the city to small businesses, nonprofits in our, in our community. We've, a small example, but impactful to our restaurants is the outdoor dining that has been allowed. And then looking toward the future in resiliency are recently, your recently adopted economic development strategy. And then, of course, the ice storm response. And adding, bringing online the ozone treatment for our water. And looking forward, your, your actions to proceed with an infrastructure bond. Also on resiliency, the efforts that we began under the policy leadership of council on emergency preparedness is showing results. In the most recent resident satisfaction survey, our preparation, our residents' preparation for natural disasters increased to 69%, up 11 percentage points from 2019. More people have emergency kits ready than they did in 2019. So, a specific, a small but important example of a specific result of the council's policy direction. On the equitable delivery of services, the city council directed independent assessment of the police department. I think is a notable example of a review of services within that important, that important department. And that's being continued by the strategic plan work that's been initiated by Police Chief Womack. We're updating our city website. We are planning and designing a customer service center on the first floor of the civic center. Equity was put into practice through council funding, DEI coordinator position. And there was certainly equity throughout the Climate Action Plan, our Salem work, and the Economic Development Strategy. And of course, as shown tonight, the city council meetings, work sessions being shown, being broadcast, excuse me, with American Sign Language in Spanish. Building great neighborhoods, I think I'd highlight the work of our Salem and the plans that will, that will result in stronger transportation, parks, housing, and natural resources, and then taking action on climate change. The task force appointed by council is completing its work and will have, have a recommendation and have a plan for, for council consideration very soon. As I mentioned, we were certainly helped by the state and federal government with resources that we were able to put, that council was able to put toward, toward sheltering and toward restoring revenues that were impacted by, by the COVID pandemic. And there's information in your staff report, which I think we'll be speaking to later, regarding the use of those funds and continuing the city's work in helping those who are unsheltered, strengthening our work to, to end homelessness and also to restore impacts, damage to one of the parks that was used for sheltering. Colleen, I think I'll, I'll stop there and come back to the rest later in the presentation.
Okay, this one's yours, too.
Well, yeah, I think I spoke to that already. I guess I would add to the additional, you know, the specifics that are, that are in the staff report regarding the legislative assistance and also the, the federal ARPA money. While it's a help, a significant help, it is one-time money. And, and as we look at what is sustainable over the next several years, what's sustainable after those funds are, are used up, we remain constrained and with, with needs that exceed our recurring revenues. The near-term funds have been committed by, by city council. The additional state money that was not anticipated when, when the ARPA funds were, were budgeted and, and the recommendations were made to you do provide some, some flexibility to council as you consider 2022 priorities. Again, I would urge that there be caution used in terms of committing to recurring or ongoing services with one-time revenues. Also, as, as you've heard me say in, in past years, you know, I think we've done better in helping council, helping the public understand more of what the city provides. Much of the discussion this evening will really not be about most of what the city does. Most of the services the city provides, and, and those services are continuing. Those services are still under some, some restraint, as particularly as the needs of our growing community increase as we've gotten into services at a deeper level such as homelessness and sheltering than we have in, in past years. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen, one of the questions I've got, I think, as we move along, how will we be using the staff report in conjunction with your screen items? I, I found these, these items on parts of page two and three is, will you kind of direct us to the staff report sections? I think those are kind of, for all of us, I'm sure we all read those, that those represent sort of part of the knowledge and discussion base for this evening?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you. So, I would say that these two slides directly reference the staff report, and I think the rest of the presentation is going to reference a little bit of the staff report and then the strategic plan and then the converse, the one-on-one conversations that the rest of us had. So, so that should not have been too much preparation for you, just the materials that you were provided prior to tonight.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking, I guess, how to, how we will use the staff report as part of the discussion this evening? Or is it just, or could you direct us to where we should be in that to? Or is that just, is that not the way it should work?
It's just background material.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, just a reminder, as we go into talking about priorities, I also wanted to provide a bit of a refresher in terms of the policy framework that we work in. So, as we are reminded every year when we think about the budget, the city has established a very strong priority-based budgeting framework with six result areas. We also established the city's strategic plan and the five-year priorities within that result area framework. So, as Steve mentioned, last year, we adopted five strategic priorities. We're in year two of that strategic plan. So, as we think about adopting our priorities for this coming year, we want to think about them within the framework of these priorities as well. And a lot of our one-on-one conversations, we all talked about really wanting to think about sustainability and continuing to stay the course, because for as much as we want to get accomplished, it's not as if the world has changed so dramatically since we adopted the strategic plan, really wanting to continue to implement what we agreed to a year ago. So, just on this slide, just a reminder of kind of where we, what we agreed to previously and kind of where we, where we wanted to go long-term here. We also adopted as part of last year's strategic plan, this model within identifying what's really the city's role. And so, I thought kind of based on some of the conversations that I know that you all have been having lately, just a little bit of a reminder of this model. So, we identified in last year's policy agenda, what's the city's role in each of these activities? Are we actually doing the work? Are we partnering with other governments, other entities in the community to do the work? Or are we a convener of other folks to be able to do the work? And we might be some combination of all of those things. Some of these goals are very large. They're cross-functional. They're multi-agency. And that's kind of what we're seeing across local government. That's what this work is. Particularly, you know, when we think about things like homelessness, like climate action, like the infrastructure bill that was just signed into law. So, we have a lot going on, right? And they're all going to be really multi-jurisdictional, multi-departmental. It's going to require a lot of cross-functional action. So, thinking about what is our role as we're thinking about what our priorities are. I also wanted to just give a little bit of a reminder, shout out to the strategic plan. We refined our values as well when we adopted that strategic plan last year. And you might recall when we met back in May as one of our governance trainings, we talked about, you know, the things that get accomplished by the city, kind of under this idea of, you know, we're being accountable, we're being proactive, we're being community-focused. We're politic, they're politically acceptable, but they're also administratively sustainable. These are things that council is responsible for, right? We're making difficult decisions. They might not have right or wrong answers. And we're making decisions that we all might have different individual understandings of what those consequences and outcomes are. And so, we had a very robust conversation about that about six months ago. And that is probably going to shape a lot of what our conversation is tonight. So, I thought I would just bring that back to all of us as well before we, we really get into it. Um, so, coming from staff, and this is also reflected in, in the staff report, in the strategic plan as some of those potential future-year activities. We have some pretty significant ongoing activities and upcoming major activities. First and foremost is the bond initiative. We have implementation of the American Rescue Plan Act and that three-year timeframe to spend the dollars. We have strategic plans coming out of a number of functions in the city, economic development, police department, and the library. So, both completing those strategies and then determining how we will implement them, continuing to invest in responding to the sheltering crisis and homelessness response, staffing for public safety, level of service for emergency response, the city's DEI and anti-racism strategy, implementing the Climate Action Plan, and then implementing our Salem. And you'll see in the staff report, we've recreated a chart here that's in the staff report around the timing of implementing our Salem. So, we wanted to share this with you tonight as well, really thinking about, there is a long tail when we update a comprehensive plan. There's a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this, and there's going to be a lot of work that comes out of it as well. So, thinking about the number of plans that then get updated as the result of the plan, thinking about shaping our community and our built environment going forward. So, there's a transportation system plan, a parks plan, the goal five repairing inventory for natural resources, an economic opportunities analysis, a housing production strategy, and then there's also the Climate Action Plan and associated strategies. So, many of these have a staff time associated with them. There's a potential consultant cost. There may be outside funding available for them. But there's a, there's a lot of work upcoming just to make sure that we are all buttoned up and in line with what we want to do so that we can set up the community appropriately for the future. We also wanted to provide just a little bit of context associated with that and with the bond, which is the capital project lifecycle. So, when we identify a capital project, you know, typically, a city might have a five-year capital program. We can identify projects, you know, 10 or 20 years in advance. If we have a deferred maintenance backlog, like every city in America does, we might have projects that have been in the queue for more than a decade. So, it takes quite some time to identify what the cost is, identify what the project will be. We go through a process of putting in the infrastructure plan. The council will approve that. We identify with engineering and, and initial design. We also consult with stakeholders, other agencies that might have jurisdiction like ODOT, other agencies that might eventually also help to permit the project, as we're not the only permitting agency in town. We also identify potential funding, so there can be grant funds, matching funds, other funding that could potentially be available. We, we then put the project into the city CIP and fund the project. And then we permit the project, finish design and engineering bid and construct. That timeline's really different from maybe an elected official's time on council. And so, you know, in, in sort of my sort of day-to-day, I see the capital program cycle being something that is often questioned a lot at the elected official level because it's a huge dollar amount, but we see things move pretty slowly through the cycle. And so, we want to make sure that this is something that we're aware of also as we're thinking about bonds, as we're thinking about infrastructure, really understanding what the timing and the prioritization of these things are as it is a pretty long and intensive process on the part of city staff as well as, you know, to really involve the community as well. So, we all had delightful one-on-one conversations over the past couple of weeks, talking about what your priorities are for the next couple of years, really focusing on this next year. So, I have captured at a very high level what our conversations were, thinking about what our priorities were on this single slide. And the numbers next to them are, if I had more than one person say it as a top priority, I counted that. And so, they are roughly in priority order here. And so, I think the number one thing that I really want to call out is that we've got quite a bit of agreement already on continuing our homelessness work, implementing our Salem and the bond measure. And that really does align with our strategic plan that we adopted last year, really thinking about that community resilience, thinking about responding to the homelessness crisis, and, and really thinking about investing in the, in the built environment. Within homelessness, we have interest in a mobile crisis unit. Within implementing our Salem, we have a number of things. So, a lot of interest in transportation from the perspective of bicycle, pedestrian, multimodal infrastructure, and just in general, safety and accessibility across the city. And really thinking about equity when we're thinking about that as well. Interested in thinking about the city's tree canopy, thinking about incorporating the task force recommendations from the Climate Action Plan as we are implementing our Salem recommendations, thinking about noise and light pollution and Vision Zero as well as we are working on those plans. On the right-hand side, you'll see other items that had less frequency, no less importance. So, revenue sustainability, anti-racism, interest in establishing internal and performance audit function, street and sidewalk cleanliness and maintenance, excuse me, maintenance. And then two items with respect to the two of you, two of you, nine of you, eight of you, seven of you, sorry. So, we have representation on boards and committees and really thinking about that with an equity lens, thinking about reflecting the community as well as thinking about the city's boards and committees as a pipeline to council. And then council collaboration with other governments. So, the ability for you all to participate in more collaborative action with special purpose districts, the county, the state, other cities, the ability to really lean into collaboration and figure out those multi-jurisdictional solutions to some of these larger policy issues. And then finally, have, we have police staffing and affordable housing. I'm sure some other ideas may come out as we talk tonight, but I wanted to reflect all of these back to you and really show you how much agreement there was already going forward. So, with that in mind, we have two big questions tonight. Really, what critical priorities do we lean into? We really want to get to a reasonable number that the city can achieve, given the resources that we have, given the things that we have, that we really want to focus on, that we have the ability to focus on. And then, given that, what might our trade-offs be? So, with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And, Mr. Mayor, I think I may turn it back to you, if you wouldn't mind starting.
Oh, not a bit. Well, I think what we probably want to do is begin talking about those high-level, particularly maybe the high-level priorities initially, then looking at some of the detailed priorities that may fit in. Does that, does that work for everybody? Do you all feel comfortable with that? Making sure we're all still on the same page. I mean, that we, we all agree homelessness is at the top of the list, maybe is a place to start, someplace like that. Does that work for you all, or do you want to try it a different way? Yeah.
I see thumbs up.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
And, and I would say, you know, based on our conversations, that I think homelessness absolutely was everyone's top priority.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the real, the real questions there actually pick up a batch of some of these other issues in terms of the working with other, other governments, any kind of housing policy, all of those other things that might fit in with it. But are there, are there things in homelessness you'd like to focus on? Or, I mean, if I look at it right now, my, my brothers would be to continue what's been a really major investment in the Housing First model, that everything we do, we are trying to get people housed. That's really the top, that's our top-line activity, is to get people into some kind of permanent or permanent supportive or affordable, whatever the housing options are, whether it's the UGM or, you know, a pop-up camp of, a pop-up village of some sort.
Thank you for sharing that. I think that's good. I see Councilmember Anderson's hand, though.
Ah, I'm sorry. Hi, Tom.
Hi. I actually, could you, now I'm lowering my hand. I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that there is a whole lot of overlap here. And what I see an overlap with the homelessness issue is affordable housing. All those things are together, and it seems to me, we can't just look, and we're not, just looking at the issue of taking care of unsheltered people, but we're looking at the issue of taking care of the entire population of our city that many of whom cannot afford housing. And I think this also really relates to diversity and equity issues, and we really need to look hard at that. So, I, I agree that the homelessness issue and its many tendrils that come off of that, we really ought to look at.
Would you see, Tom, the, the affordable housing portion of your, of homelessness really is part of our housing problem? Homelessness really, I, I'm thinking of it, and that's where I, I appreciate your thinking on it. I tend to think of it as the unsheltered population. That's who people are talking to us about. They're not talking to us about people with, that would prefer or need to have lower rents or lower mortgages. Yeah, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think this, just a follow-up on my, when I kind of, one of my thoughts last meeting was, if you think about it in terms of three different areas when we're dealing with homelessness, and that's prevention, preventing homelessness, managing homelessness and ending homelessness. So if you, if you think about the things that we do in those three categories, and some things are in, or the money, sorry, I just lost my ear button. Like you could, you could say affordable housing, and if you look at it through that lens, the prevention, managing and, and ending. So affordable housing is absolutely part of our homelessness strategy. It can be prevention and it can also be ending, right? Because if you have affordable housing, then the risk of the, of becoming homeless is decreases. Or if you are already homeless, then having affordable housing can be part of your path out of homelessness. So it can be in both. But I think if you just, if we use that prevention, managing and ending lens on all these things, that is, those are all part of our continuum. And so if, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's managed camping, whether it's micro shelters, whether it's our navigation center, whether it's any sort of street outreach, all those things, those are all part of our homelessness strategy. And if, if, like I said, if you look at it through the preventing, managing, ending lens, it really kind of frames up the, it, it kind of frames it up nicely and helps kind of work through any, any hang-ups that we might be having and okay, well, where does this go? Where does it not go and that sort of thing? And I think we have to decide like what are, what's our priority in terms of we want to spend more money on managing or ending or preventing or all three or, you know, two of them right now and one later, you know, because there's different strategies, there's different strategies for all of you.
Chris, what do you think the public is saying when they say homelessness is their number one issue? Are they talking about affordable housing or are they talking about the guy camped on in front of Rite Aid?
So I think the public is, depends on who you mean by the public. I think there's a varying degree of.
I mean, the vast majority of the public. What do you think they generally?
I think there's a varying degree of sophistication and knowledge, but, and of course, it's the thing right in front of them. But as elected leaders, we have to look at the detail of that and go beyond what the average person on the streets because we have a lot more information than they do. And so we need to, we need to be focusing on actually solving this problem and not on what every, you know, polling every person in the community believes because they don't have the same, the same information that we have. And so it's important, their opinions are important, of course, and it needs to inform what we do, but I don't think it should completely constrain what we do by any means.
Hey.
I see your hand is back up.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I agree with what Chris is saying and I also think that some of the, the work we've been doing to make affordable housing, the people who are in that, all the various projects we've done, if we hadn't done that, those people would be on the streets. And that to me is the direct correlation.
I mean, the thousands in the, in the, in the housing authority, housing and that type of situation.
Yeah, all that stuff. If we were doing that, th- those people would be on the streets. So to me, you know, everything on the top is just pushing down, pushing down, pushing down in terms of higher rents, higher rents, higher rents, and then people get filled out. And that's the way the system is working. But if we can provide some alternatives, both through incentives to private developers and in our own, then we're, we're helping those folks who are at the risk of getting squeezed out at the bottom because of the high cost of housing.
So you see it as an economic problem. What about the social services problem? Just drug addiction, alcoholism, mental health, how about that?
Well, I think those are, uh, 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 drug addiction, alcohol, mental health, that's part of the homeless population. I think the other population is the ones that I've just said that get squeezed out.
Okay.
And the, 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 the last segment to me is the people who don't want to be housed, who are antisocial, antisociety, and they have their own rules. And there's not much we can do about those people except to monitor their behavior and, and subject to appropriate measures taken when we see it. But the, the, the people who get squeezed out and the people with addiction and mental health problems, that's where we should be looking at. Because those are the people who are, you know, on the streets that people see when they are on the river or whatever.
Hey, Jose.
Yeah, I just want to mention when we talk about affordable housing, that's a term that's also confusing because for the regular person, it just means, you know, market rate housing that is affordable to them. And for us, it might mean government-supported, you know, low-income housing with some financial support through grants, government. So those are the two things that I think we have to be, when we talk about it, we have to be careful because we'll say affordable housing and then, and some people don't understand what that means. So I think there's two different things we're talking about here.
Virginia?
Yeah, do we have a definition of what, what we mean of affordable housing? Just to make sure that maybe we're all on the same page and all, all nine of us.
Okay. Kristen?
Yeah, so we typically would talk about a few different tiers of affordability. One would be the very low-income, deeply subsidized housing, which it targets around 30% of the average median income. And then affordable at an average of 60% of the average median income. And that level of affordability usually requires some pretty deep incentives. You know, a lot of our projects that are either housing authority projects, are projects funded with home or CBPG funds will target closer to that 60% AMI. As also our single property urban renewal district that we're doing with Mountain West Investments is an average of 60% AMI. And then you get more into the workforce, slightly below, you know, your market rate at 80% AMI.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, and I appreciate Councilor Gonzalez's point here with our language. I think it's really important that we are precise with that. We often use word phrases and terms as interchangeable when they're not. I noticed in our staff report, we, we talked about camping when really, we don't have any managed camping in the city currently. We have micro shelter sites and, and other things. But I think it's, so I think it's just, this isn't a criticism, it's just a reminder that we need to be really thoughtful about the language we use. Because affordable housing can, we can be talking about a specific federally, federal definition or we can just be talking about like small A affordable housing, which is something like what Jose was talking about. And so I just think it's important that we get really precise with our language that we're all talking about. We know what we're all talking about.
Chris, one thing I want to check on, but then I want to call on Vanessa is, would you like to build in your three buckets into this, into kind of our strategy on this thing? I, I've been real taken with your approach and I wonder if that would be something you'd want to kind of make sure is, is put sort of on the table, however we're going to proceed forward, but that, that, that be picked up as a specific item in terms of as part of our strategy.
Yeah, I think it's a really, a really good framework or a lens, however you want to call it. It's a, it's a good approach. It's a, it's a good way to just sort of understand the strategies and to, to categorize them. So yeah, I think it's a good framework and I would like to see it definitely.
Okay, but is anyone strongly object if we put that sort of on the, into the parking lot under homelessness to be brought to us in January, that this, this three-pronged approach, this three-bucket approach, however, Chris wants to characterize it, is that, everybody okay with that one? Okay, Vanessa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I get a sense that there's no one on this council who is opposed to making affordable housing a priority or opposed to making homelessness a priority. I think we all agree to support those things and want to make sure we're all on the same page and I totally get that. And I also really appreciate the fact that in recent history, this council has also voted to support setting aside seed funding for a mobile crisis unit. And a couple of things that folks said so far this evening really reminds me of why we added that to our list of priorities and why I am championing that and continue to remain on that list. First of all, when I think about the three buckets, and I absolutely love that concept, I see how mobile crisis units can support all three of those buckets. In terms of prevention of homelessness, when you have crisis response, you can avoid escalation of conflict before people lose everything, before they get evicted from their housing because of a mental health crisis, for example. Finding ways to de-escalate and triage people in the field is a terrific way to prevent people from having the kind of fiery outbursts that can get themselves evicted from their apartment or the shelter site they've been staying at or what have you. In terms of managing homelessness, we've heard from dozens and dozens of members of the community who have said that they would happily and readily call a mobile crisis unit to respond to people on the street who are not committing a crime, but who look to be lost, who look to be confused, who look cold, who look tired, who look like they need help, but you don't know how to help that person. And that's where we know that from places like Kahoots, they are experts at developing the rapport and getting people to establish that level of trust. And lastly, when it comes to ending homelessness, we know that the services are available to people who need to develop that rapport, who may not respond to a police officer, no matter how well-intentioned, no matter how trauma-informed. Sometimes police officers can just be a scary presence to people and we know that based on what we've heard from the homelessness advocates and others. It is not the fault of that police officer, it's just the fact that this is a systemic trauma. But having the opportunity to have a crisis unit that is civilian-led means that they have people in plain clothes and in plain English who can simply talk to people and say, hey, where are you staying? Where, where do you live right now? What, do you need, do you need help getting to a service provider? These folks can take work off of our police officers' plates and our firefighters' plates and get them transported to places where they can take advantage of those services or get them back to their shelter or connect them with a shelter. And I think that could be really helpful for the people that Councilor Anderson mentioned. There are some people who are extremely resistant to services for a variety of reasons and you're not going to build trust with those people overnight. So I see how keeping the mobile crisis unit on our list of priorities can help us with all three of those buckets and help us address the crisis that we're seeing from people struggling through the pandemic, whether they're homeless or not, this is a service that would be available to everyone. So I just urge that we keep that on our list of priorities in the year ahead.
Trevor?
Yeah, thank you. First, I, I want to enthusiastically endorse the framework that City Council President Chris Hoy laid out at our last meeting and brought up again tonight. Mayor, I agree with you. I think that that's a superb framework in terms of, you know, prevention, managing and ending homelessness. So I would really look forward to seeing that incorporated in a, in a document in our future. You know, I, I do want to say a couple other things tonight. You know, I think we all agree that it's the number one issue that's, that's we're facing as a city council, that the city wants us to address. You know, in humility, I don't know exactly what the community wants, but my educated guess would be people want to have, you know, they want to see results and they want to have less, you know, negative interactions and, you know, the visibility of having people experience what looks like a devastating problem like right in front of their eyes. And, and so the question I have for myself is which one of those buckets can we, should we and how should we best, you know, budget our, our dollars to make an impact on that? I mean, I think as you've said and many others have said, Housing First is, is an incredibly important model to get people the permanent supportive housing that they need. But it's, I don't think it's enough. I do think we're going to have to put resources in every single bucket. And, and I, I think it's been said by Councilor Nordike to a certain extent, but I just want to reemphasize that, you know, it's been brought up before. We have the highest percentage and, and per capita number of people who are chronically unhoused for a variety of reasons. So our, you know, patient population or city population in terms of people experiencing homelessness is really kind of challenging to meet their needs, which is why I think it's important to build out our infrastructure of support services. I don't think anybody wants to be homeless. You know, every shift I'm carrying for people in the emergency room who, who are experiencing that in our community and, and, you know, nobody chooses that, you know, with a plethora of options, but it's just that for a variety of reasons, be it mental health, physical health, be it addiction or some combination of, of, you know, prior trauma and all of the other things I just mentioned, they don't have an option that feels safe or ready for them to use now. So I, I think it's going to be important for us to chip away at this. I think we're doing a good job of moving away from unmanaged, you know, literally camping and unmanaged sheltering to managed sheltering. And I want to see us continue in that trend. And then I, I may forget one other point, but I, I do want to stress that I think there is an important need for our community to build out its infrastructure in terms of being able to help people with addiction issues. And I've, I've been talking about it for years, Mayor Bennett, I know you have too. I think we need to fund a sobering center. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I am in agreement too with, with everybody here that we, what we've talked about so far about recognizing that affordable housing is, is part of the issue, seeing how it would be really helpful to have these three buckets to kind of help folks understand and help us kind of guide where we're heading and the need for all of the different ways that we're going to help address the needs of the, the day-to-day needs of folks, whether it's the sobering center, Hoots Models, 24-hour public bathrooms downtown, right? Like all of those things are managing. And the Housing First, of course, that is, that is going to be our ticket out of this. But I am, I want to bring up something that's maybe not so popular and that is how are we going to fund this? And I want to bring council's attention back to the email we got from Jimmy Jones. That was on, or Jones, excuse me, on 10/23, he sent us a letter that talked about how we are going to have to find funding for this because this is a long-term problem. And when I was running for office, I said, we got, it took 30 years to get into this problem. It's going to take us 30 years to get out. And I know that's not super great news, but, you know, when I look at ways that we can support our community with this ask, this want that they have requested us to take care of, how are we going to fund that? I look at the information from the Finance Committee previous to my time when we did the operations fee to keep us afloat and how there were some folks, I think it's Eugene, that's at $10 a month instead of eight. Would that be something that we could look at, getting that extra $2 to just earmark it for the social services that we are now in to help, you know, alleviate some of this really tough budget constraints that we have? And like City Manager Powers was talking about, we, we, we have all this one-time money and that's fantastic and great. But in a year's time or two years' time, we're not going to be able to, to, you know, manage that navigation center without getting some more funds in the door. And so that's where my brain is at. I am fully on board with everything that you guys are talking about and I would love to, to really dive in and do a lot of great work. I just see a really, a big budget shortfall and I, I want to, I guess, talk about that a little bit too. Maybe not tonight, I just want to say it's all in mind.
Along with the, along with the money, Counselor, I'd really suggest that part of what will happen over time is really increased reliance on collaboration with other governments. We have got to have a collaborative relationship with our counties and the state as well as there are other portions of the government, but those, I think those, part of the, the, the reality of it is, is some people actually have the structure in place, they just haven't got it focused right from our perspective. And I think one of the things that Counselor Hoy is describing is a framework of actions and places to begin fitting pieces together in this broader regional plan. And his, the, the alliance and other things like that, I think, give us that. But it does require a collaborative relationship, which that has not been the, the long-term tradition for city councils, counties and state government. They tend to go at it, you know, their own way. So I just, that I think might become a part of that priority list, as particularly as we deal with the social service areas. Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Oh, I was just going to say, I was really intrigued by the possibility that Counselor Stapleton mentioned about the $2 increase. Knowing that we have exceptions for individuals who cannot afford certain utility costs and we have a utility rate relief program, I'm intrigued by that possibility. And yeah, obviously the costs are extremely important and that's why I'm hoping. And that's why I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity to really talk about, what do we do with the ten-point-five million we just got? How can we make the most out of that? And how will that free us up for other things that we were gonna otherwise just spend general fund dollars on? So, anyway, just wanted to say ditto to all that.
So, we've got a, uh, it sounds like, uh, we've got quite a bit of information already developed. On homelessness and the work we're doing, but we, we're really adding, uh, Counselor Hoy's framework. Is there anything else you'd like to take on in that homeless, that you'd like to kinda add to the mix? We've, we've had Counselor Nordike's, uh, uh, continuing support for the mobile crisis unit. The non, uh, non-police, non-fire transportation interaction system. Uh, what else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lewis has, uh, has been trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry. Speak up, it's okay to yell at me, I don't mind that. I really don't care if you yell at me anymore.
That's what I did.
I know, I know.
Well, I actually, I, I wanted to echo something that, uh, Mayor Bennett brought up, and that's the, that's the importance of the partnerships. Whether they be government or, or the nonprofits or, or, or the private sector. Without the partnerships, there's no, there's no chance of success. Um, and, and quite frankly, what we see now, um, I'll use Portland as an example. Uh, they're immediately turning, well, the federal government has let us down. Well, you know, I think we can say every, every aspect of government has let us down to some extent. But we have to have those partnerships. If for nothing else, to address the housing issue. The partnerships are gonna be mandatory if we hope to have any success with the housing issue.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to answer your question or to respond to your question, I would like to. Um, I guess let me just state my feeling and then, uh, a strategy to maybe fix it. But I feel like we are not progressing fast enough. We talked about this a little bit in our last city council meeting. We're not progressing fast enough on, in terms of number of sites for our micro shelter locations, for our safe park. And, and those sorts of things. And I think we really need to take a, a deeper look and a new look. At what the parameters are around those, what are the criteria, and maybe rethinking those, because we're not, I mean. Ms. Bennett is here on our screen and she works tirelessly trying to, uh, increase those numbers and continues to come up. Uh, empty. I mean, my intern has been working, uh, diligently since September on trying to increase the number of safe park sites. I think we might have one new one coming on board. He's literally talked to dozens, reached out to dozens and dozens and dozens of organizations. If people are hesitant, but, so we, we need to retool, um, we need to retool that right away.
Yeah, and I think staff continues to work on that, but I hear what you're saying, we gotta get that on to the, for this year. Do you have a, in, in your mind, Chris, what would be a goal? What would be, uh, we've got a hundred, hundred and fifty of those little pop-up houses. Is it just getting those on the ground, or what would be a good goal that you could measure success by in this area?
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, you can only, you can only grow, uh, as far as you have capacity to manage, and I know that that's a limitation. But also citing, and I, I'd say that's a, if we could get a hundred and fifty of those micro shelters, uh, cited within the next six months. That would be amazing, 'cause, and when you talk to people like Jimmy Jones and DJ Benson, folks who are really, who are on the ground doing the work. You know, it's not like we need a micro shelter for every person, because people move through those as we manage them, and they go off to their next better place. So it's not like we need, uh, you know, one for every homeless person. We need, we need a, a sufficient quantity. To allow people to get the services they need for the length of time they need, and then to move to the next better place. And so, uh, you know, there is no, nobody knows what that number is. I mean, we can all, you know, give a number and support it, but there's no right answer. But certainly, uh, a lot more than what we have today.
Could, uh, would, would everyone be comfortable with, uh, setting up a goal inside this or to take a look at in January, okay? That during the next, uh, this next, uh, uh, cycle, we are going to. Uh, make a goal of a hundred and fifty pop-up houses. On, on locations here in town. And then, we're gonna live with the, what that means in terms of citing that stuff. I mean, that'll be the big trick, is citing it. Is that what you're thinking, Chris? Would you wanna try it that way?
Uh, I would be fine with that. I think it might be helpful to hear from, from Gretchen Bennett, to hear her thoughts on it before we weigh in too far into that.
Okay.
There's no doubt, location, location, location. Um, thanks to regional partnerships, we have more outreach from a variety of organizations than we've had before. And outreach providers are reporting back to us, we need places for people to be able to go. There is no doubt that that's a huge need. Of course, along with that are the issues around sustainability that you all discussed earlier. What will be doable for us, what, what will be the city's role and contribution within our broader region? To be able to establish and sustain the kinds of partnerships that are needed. But we, we are grateful to have more street outreach than ever before, but they're coming back with, with kind of grim reports of. People can't locate locations, people can't locate housing, people can't locate treatment programs, people can't locate. And, and it's that getting people to the next location where we're really getting stuck.
Okay. So Gretchen, are you saying yes or no to?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Of course, I, I want you to know, we are hearing your urgency and the urgency of the community. And are certainly not intending to be hemmed into, um, narrow criteria and are at work. Really, um, turning over the stones and looking for locations, um, and, and are working to bring back to you some ideas.
Well, I think it also, when you do something like a number, it also puts the heat on us. As a city, as to finding locations that we own. Uh, you know, and, and others, the state of Oregon, um, Marion County, that, you know. We may not have a private sector that can help us as much as we can among ourselves, you know what I mean? It, but we, it turns the heat up on us as a council, on others around us, uh, on commissions and. In the legislature to help us with finding those locations.
I do, and I'll work to bring you both locations as well as some context about the financial sustainability of it. To, to Counselor.
Well, that's a, yeah, that sustainability is a killer. Chris?
Thank you, and, and, and I, I don't want this to sound, uh, like I don't agree with the issue about sustainability, because I certainly do. Financial sustainability is critical and, and it's our responsibility. But I, I feel like we let that be an excuse sometimes for not making quicker progress. And just for a minute, I think we need to forget about that, not forget about it, put it on the side burner for a minute. And just really get some of these places out there, so we can, we have this immediate need that we just keep not addressing. And I, it's not for lack of trying, I wanna, I wanna equip Ms. Bennett with the tools she needs to make this happen. When, and I think there might be, she might have, there might be some decisions that we can make to do that. But I, I feel like, let us, let's worry about sustainability in a few months, after we get some of these places cited. And we can, you know what, if we can't afford to keep these going past a year, well, let's shut them down.
Yeah.
Okay, these are, these are temporary locations, it's not a lot of infrastructure, they can, they can be shut down if we can't afford it. But, but at the least, it'll give people a better place to be for whatever period of time we have them operating. And we can be working on sustainability, we can be working on more funding, but if we never get started because we're worried about sustainability. Then we never actually begin to solve the problem.
Yeah, we didn't see all the problems that would come from camping in the parks. Uh, and that has been, we do not, we now know that's a terrible model. Uh, but we need to keep trying these larger, larger programs like Chris suggested. And we, we can close them down, we've done that. We can open them up and close them down. Okay, who am I missing here? Ms. Powers?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just, uh, some additional context. A hundred and fifty, for example, that would equate to about five, uh, managed shelter sites. Five little village sites, uh, we found that thirty is the, kind of the maximum, the ideal. Number in terms of operations and, uh, uh, financial efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen?
Just a official time check, we're halfway through our time tonight.
Virginia?
Yes, I agree, um, I would love to, um, see those hundred and fifty placed. Um, but can we also not forget about the safe park? I know we have a hundred and thirty, Chris, is it? Um, that are on a waiting list for a safe park location. I would love to see those hundred and thirty have somewhere to go in the evenings as well.
Great. Trevor?
Yeah, briefly, um, I agree once again with what Counselor Hoy said, um, in terms of trying to prioritize and get past some of the. The long-term thinking just to address the immediate crisis that's in front of us. Um, and I also agree, Mayor Bennett, with you in terms of we've gotta build those relationships with other governmental agencies and other partnerships with the nonprofits. Um, you know, the sobering center I'd like to see funded is dependent on arches or, or other entities to make it happen. Um, as would, you know, a mobile crisis response unit. So, um, I, I didn't see the, the sobering center mentioned on the slide, so I was getting nervous when I don't see it. Um, I think we did the right, right thing prioritizing, um, the, the navigation center this year. Uh, I think it hits every box in terms of, you know, prevention, um, management and ending homelessness, you know. It was clearly the thing to do, but the, you know, the next step to chip away at this includes, you know, the sobering center as well as probably a mobile crisis response unit that's civilian. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go on then to implement our Salem? That seems to be the next big. Uh, is there any, there is so much of this governed by state law and timetables and things, is there? Is there anything that we need to do beyond, sort of say, implement our Salem? Mr. Powers, or who's, who's, uh, who's got their hand on the lever on this one? Who's the our Salem person? There he is.
Yeah, hi Mayor, and, uh, Lisa's here as well, so, uh, as, as you may recall. We've got a few items coming up on the agenda following our most recent work session that Eunice, uh, shared with everyone. And so, uh, as it comes to our Salem, this process is about to begin very soon with many more items on the agenda. And that then leads into many more additional projects as shared by Colleen in her slideshow. But Lisa, uh, I wanna hand it off to you to illustrate some of what's ahead in the near term. And then, of course, we can go back, Mayor, if you like, and, and look at more of what then follows after this initial process is complete. Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Anderson, we'll be your planning administrator. Well, as Norm said, we have a lot of projects, um, coming out of our Salem. So it's just the, the first step, um, in all of this work. We've identified the transportation system plan as the first major project. Um, you know, that's the, one of the number one comments we've heard, right, in our Salem is about our ability to bike and walk safely. And access transit and supporting our mixed-use vision, so that's really our first plan. We've identified many other plans, some of them are state requirements, housing production strategy, um, climate-friendly. And equitable city rules that are coming out. Obviously, the council has a climate action plan that you've been working on that has goals and policies. That, that have projects coming out of that as well. Um, Planning Commission was just here to talk about total five. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something, oh, the Parks Minister, there's so many projects. Um, the chart we've put together, and the reason we've tried to kind of space them out over a number of years is because some of these are really big initiatives. It's the same handful of staff working on most of these projects, so they can't take them on all at the same time. And because funding needs to be identified, um, for each project, we, uh, do believe there'll be state grants that will fund some of these, at least in part. Um, so we're continuing to work with our state partners on that, um, funding, uh, uh, these projects, so we'll, we'll know more as we get closer.
Are, are there statutory goals built in here anywhere? I mean, are we looking at, at any, any timeline that is mandated outside of, of our control?
Yeah, um, two of the projects have timelines, so there's a housing production strategy that the state is requiring. So, you know, we have our housing needs analysis, and once that's adopted with our Salem, then we'll be kicked into a production strategy, so it'll really.
Is that this year then? Is that something we'll be doing, a housing needs analysis as part of our Salem? I mean, that is that part of this year's?
We'll be, we won't be doing a new one, we'll be adopting the one we've had. So under state, yeah, so under state law, you can't adopt it until you address the deficit that's identified. And so you'll remember that it, uh, identified two hundred acres of multifamily deficit. So the map changes that will come as part of our Salem would, would address that, so we would no longer have a deficit of multifamily. So then we can adopt the.
Do we have a?
Housing needs analysis.
Do we have a timeline on that then, to do that this year, to get that housing needs analysis completed?
We don't, um, have a timeline for it, but once we adopt it, then we will have a timeline to do a production strategy. Which we'll be working with urban development, it's, it's not about identifying land at that point, it's about identifying strategies and funding to help produce housing. The type of housing that we need.
All types of housing, so this is part of our affordable housing?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. And the other project that will, will have timelines, um, are the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities. Rulemaking that the state's working on. Um, Julie Warnicki and I are on the Rural Advisory Committee, we've been working on it for about a year. It's very technical, um, technical, very dense, um, work that the state is doing around. Um, climate change reduction, you know, GHD reduction, so it has to do with, uh, land use requirements. Transportation, funding, bike-ped improvements, et cetera. And once the state adopts those in the spring, there will be timelines associated with the work we have to do to comply with those rules.
So, so really, the climate, the climate issues are going to be pushed at us fairly quickly by the state. In terms of having specific goals, some things like that?
Yeah, portions of them are, for sure. I mean, we have, uh, broader policies in our climate action plan that are not. Um, covered by the state's rulemaking, so other things that the cities have identified as priorities. Um, but the ones related to, again, bike, you know, ped.
And we're gonna have a list coming at us from the state.
We will, yes.
Need to do.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All these things are integrated, and there's a whole lot of balls that are in the air that we keep having to juggle. And I'm specifically looking at our Salem and how the climate action plan integrates with that.
And the state climate action plan, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've got our own, but you're right, the state is also going to be, uh, um, pushing it out on us. And, uh, the other thing is the transportation system, how does that affect? And, uh, this multifamily defect is very important. And we've got some areas in town that we really need to look at that are already there with our Salem. And I'm specifically thinking about Front Street from the, the, the railroad Ped Bridge up to Pine Street to the river. That's kind of undeveloped there, and I just saw something about the, the true. You know, plant, there's, so there's wonderful economic opportunity there for multi, uh, um, multi, multi-use. And, and high-density housing, the same thing through over in Edgewater on the, uh, Edgewater District. The old, the second street district, which is also used to be sort of, um, root and light industrial. Those places are ripe for development, uh, and they could be multifamily, uh, deficit that we can look at. So, Lisa was talking about strategies to develop housing, and here are some. And then, when we're looking at the transportation system plan, there are several ways that we can potentially, uh, uh. Have mobility around the entire city from West Salem all the way out to the freeway, and I think we need to look at that. And, and, uh, at some point, I'll be coming to the council with what, um, has, uh, um. Alliteratively, uh, I've called the Salem Streetcar System, where we can talk about, about connecting. Uh, 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 those, those, uh, multiple, multiple high-density housing on either side of the river. With the, uh, places where people work and maybe all the way out to the freeway. But all these things are all in the air, and, and I look forward to discussing them all in the, in the coming years.
Great. So our Salem, climate action, the transportation, all that's gonna, is already in the works, we're, we're underway, it sounds like.
Yes.
We don't need to worry about any of those right now.
Well, uh, yes and no, still need to monitor them. I say, I say we don't have to worry about the fact.
Right. And it sounds like they have drivers already in place, you know?
Yes, that's no pun intended, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no, I know, I know, I agree with you.
Okay, right.
But there are, there are, uh, timelines, there are, there is a whole set of, uh. Uh, projects and plans and things that are both ours, the states, that'll be coming together. For the council, I think part of it's gonna be, if you can, for the strategic plan is give us. And I, I don't think we can talk about it maybe very intelligently, but have you guys give us a rational. maybe very intelligently, but have you guys give us a rational and, and doable kind of project list that tells us sort of where we're going this year, next year, the year after. Uh, does that make sense? To you guys? Norm, Lisa?
Yes, it certainly does, Mayor. And this is similar to, again, what was shared by Colleen on her screen, but we'll refine it. We can provide even more glimpses to those next few years, the critical path of what comes next in each one of these turns.
Well, I think it is also the kind of thing that allows us to develop the sort of transparent process we're going to need on each of those elements that include public, uh, public involvement, public information, all that as well. All of these things have very direct impact on our citizens and are just the kind of thing they want to know about and be able to comment on, I think. So. Okay. A bond. Who's on the bond committee? That's. Are we still on the same course on getting this bond onto the ballot as one, as probably our primary uh, fiscal strategy is the, the bond measure we've talked about? Is everyone still okay that that's a major strategic goal is to get that onto the ballot and successfully through an election in November? And, yeah, Virginia?
Thank you, um, yes, um, I'm on the Finance Committee, and I was, um, I know Tom has some things to say as well. And I want to, I want to continue my support here. I also um, want to give a moment of pause. Um, I am a little concerned uh, with the passage um, from Congress. I'm wondering if folks maybe will look at this and say, if we're getting this big infrastructure plan from Congress, why do I need to support a local bond?
Sure.
And so that, that has, I mean, I am like over the moon um, that we have it, have something coming through Congress. Um, but I also understand that this also needs to be a local look at things, um, because it's, it's a different timeline, it's a different level. Um, it's um, as different, I guess, um, ways of impacting our community. And so I am all on board. I just wanted to voice that little, that little voice in my head that was giving me some pause. How are we gonna address that side of?
As, as the national Congress and administration keeps saying it's gonna solve all the world's problems, uh, they won't solve all the Salem's. I, I think, and will, I'm sure Mr. Powers and Mr. Fernandez and others will work with us on uh, Chief Niblock on how that all fits together. We haven't seen rules, we have no idea, they have no idea what they passed, you know? It'll be a while, so. Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I think uh, Counselor Stapleton makes an excellent point, and I think you are both absolutely correct. Uh, there's nothing in that appropriation that says that uh, that these uh, uh, projects will be exempt from federal permits. Uh, both permits tend to at least double the cost of projects. Uh, at this point, we have uh, one transportation project that is federally fu- uh, federally permitted, and that's McGill Crust. And we certainly would look forward to having that, that's a twenty million dollar hit. So to be able to get federal funding for that and take that off the bond list would be gigantic for us. But uh, you know, projects that uh, that we are interested in here in Salem, so that uh, improvements that uh, uh, bring with them uh, you know, bike and ped improvements and uh, uh, and other things like that are really not well-suited for federal funding. So uh, so we really need that bond, and, and we're gonna have to uh, speak to that issue and make sure that the, the community understands that those are two different things. So it's a great, great, great point, Counselor Stapleton.
Chief Niblock, did you wanna?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to weigh in real quick. Uh, so far from what I've seen, there is no funding opportunity for replacing fire apparatus uh, in that, the federal monies, uh, and that's a critical need uh, for the community as soon as possible. Um, we originally planned to go out in twenty twenty for a bond, and that was put on hold uh, because of the payroll tax issue. Um, that got canceled because of COVID, so we're, we're getting to the point where we need to replace these fire apparatus. So I, I would encourage that to be a consideration as well. Uh, and we don't think we're gonna get money from the feds for that.
Okay. Okay, so we know the bond measure, yeah, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm Chair of the Finance Committee, and we've done a lot of work on this, and I'm glad to see that the Steering Committee that you appointed includes other counselors. But I just want to volunteer to you now that I'm prepared to go out and speak about this.
Oh, yeah.
Anytime, anytime. Uh, I, I'm prepared to discuss with the Steering Committee anytime, the sort of the machinations or the, the planning process that went through with Mr. Barron and now Mr. Eggleston to discuss this stuff. And I think we've got a cogent uh, um, pre- uh, argument or presentation we can make to the city as to why we need these things. Forget about the feds, we can do this on our own, and we can do it without any increase in cost to the tax, taxpayers of the city. And that's the message we need to send out. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to go marching off to talk about this anytime.
Excellent, thank you. And that, I'm sure everyone on the council feels that way. Counselor Lewis?
Well, y- yeah, I'll, I'll chime in, it's great to have the, the federal money when it gets here. But if that allows us to put a little bit money toward, more money towards homelessness, that's good too.
Well, yeah, yeah, and if it extends the life of our bond over time, that's even better. So you never know what you're gonna end up with exactly in a, in a federal bonding or program like this. Colleen, are we getting to the stuff you need?
Um, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's take a look at.
I see Counselor Phillips.
This is, this will be hopefully.
Missing, oh, I'm sorry, Trevor.
It's okay, pretty brief. Um, so uh, just my science background, we think about things in orders of magnitude. And, and the important thing for the people to understand, besides the most important thing with this, which is for no additional taxes, you can get, uh, we as a community can get two to three hundred million dollars um, to really make a dent. The issue is the need, and the need is two billion dollars. And, and no version of the, the federal transportation packages that were discussed and ultimately shrunk down to that one point two trillion got Salem whole. So we need this infrastructure bill, we need this local bond to make a difference and, and get that two to three hundred million over the next ten years. Um, it, you know, to make a dent um, for no additional taxes, so. That's it.
Very good. Okay, uh, the remainder of the, of the uh, issues on the table. We've talked a little about collaboration as it related to homelessness. I think probably as it relates to these bond funds, all that kind of stuff. What, what other um, uh, what other issues? Uh, revenue sustainability, I think Virginia brought up is uh, absolutely fundamental. I. Do you want to speak to it again, Virginia?
Sure.
Each year at night, right, thinking about?
But it does, how did you know? Um, yes, um, you know, I think about that a lot, especially being on the Finance Committee. I think you get um, a little bit deeper look um, at the forecasting, and you get to have a relationship with, with Josh Eggleston and, and understand a little bit more of the complexities of uh, what's happening, um, what has happened in the past with Measures Five and Fifty that really um, have just really um, not enabled us to have the flexibility to, to grow and, and change and meet the needs of the city. And so, um, I think it's, it's critical. I mean, obviously, we've talked about it a lot, how we uh, typically do not do social services. Well, well, we're in that business now, a little bit now as well. So I'm just trying to meet the demands uh, for what folks are wanting from us. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna take financial stability, so I'm, I'm there as well. Um, I, I really do, I don't want to miss the opportunity since I'm already talking. I do want to talk about climate action um, tonight at some point in time, whenever you're ready, Mayor.
In there, we just went through it, actually. So what would you like to say?
Uh, well, for me, um, for me, it's a kind of a separate issue altogether, and I know.
No, we went through it real quick with our Salem. There's a whole batch of these things coming at us and sort of looking at how we can come forward on it. What would you like to focus on there?
Yeah, for me, um, the big things with the, with the climate action um, documentation that's coming to us and the list of plans to implement, the things that I'm really looking for are looking for um, getting our tree canopy uh, really off to a, you know, the best time to plant a tree is yesterday, right? Um, and so really getting those trees in the ground, finding ways to support um, our crews. I, I heard we have over three hundred thousand trees um, in a six-man crew or, or something uh, that's just, uh, it's hard to fathom. Um, but if we're gonna continue to plant the, the trees that we need, we're gonna need to invest um, there as well. And that's something that we can invest in now, um, and have long-term benefits. Um, and then the other thing I'd really like to see is just uh, some real strong stance um, in our movement towards bike and pedestrian infrastructure that connected, separated bike lanes that are um, that are direct and uh, connect folks to their services that they need. Um, and then also um, looking at ways to protect folks um, by going to a twentieth plenty in our residential areas and looking at a Vision Zero um, that would really be the basis for how we're going to approach the updates to our transportation uh, system updates um, and master plan update. Um, but that to me is how can we get to a place where we don't have those pedestrian deaths? We don't have those um, biking car collisions that are taking the lives of our residents. And that to me is something that I want to be really focused on this next year.
And that would all come under the bike, ped, multimodal, infrastructure discussion as, as part of that.
Yeah, and you know, the climate action plan is there as well. We have to, you know, double the amount of people who are on bikes, and, and so that to me is all interconnected as well.
Okay. I'd like to just mention one to you that I now, you'll all, I don't know how many of you will moan or not moan. Um, the uh, Chief of Police has indicated he needs sixty new officers. And if you're gonna talk Vision Zero and twenty twenty and all the other, particularly in transportation and in some other areas, I don't know how you do it without getting serious about your police department. Uh, this police department has been woefully understaffed for as long as I can remember. Uh, and the numbers are, are really pretty catastrophic. And all I think all you have to do is look at the number of people being killed on, on bike at night or walking at night to see there is a human cost to this. And then for some of you, like you and I, Virginia, we got shootings going on in our parks. We've got uh, substantial amount of criminal activity on the rise. I, I really think we need to listen to the chief, he's going to be approaching us with a staffing analysis. I think we need to get it on our list, whether we want to go to the sixty with him, that's a whole different question. Uh, as a budgetary question, but I, I really think we need to take a look at our police department. Uh, it's, it's just uh, woefully. Well, I was in Dayton, Ohio this past summer, talked to a lieutenant on that department. They have over five hundred officers, uh, smaller town than we are, smaller city, different, but smaller. And uh, uh, we're at what, about two hundred? What have we got on the streets, Steve? How many, how many cops? Ah, there's the chief. Chief, you can make your case. I, 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 I just think uh, from what I've seen, we're, we're, we're just not gonna get there if we don't start moving on this thing.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Counselors, Trevor Mack, Chief Police, um, agree, the department is understaffed. We've had several assessments now that have kind of pointed that out for us, so it's not just me saying that on my own, even though I did bring a fresh set of eyes in from the outside. Um, we're understaffed for a city our size, and we are facing additional challenges. So I do think that if we want to move forward, and I have a grand vision for community policing and better partnerships with our community here. I just think it's gonna be uh, dependent upon our capacity to do that work. And so I do think there's a, a need for increased staffing, there's a staffing analysis that we can talk more about later um, with a little more detail. But again, the number there, as you mentioned, around sixty, I think that is a fair number as far as our capacity to, to collaborate better with our community, do problem solving with our, with our community, to work on some of these quality of life issues and be much more responsive to neighborhood association groups and requests that we all see coming through council and directly to me about issues in our city. And as you mentioned, Mayor, the, the violent crime that's occurring too, it's real, um, and it needs to be addressed. And so we have to make sure that we're adequately staffed to do that.
Anyone object to that going on to our, or want to talk about? I don't mean object, that's not a fair way to put it. Uh, really want to talk more of it, the chief about it, having it going on to one of our priorities this year? Virginia?
Uh, I think this uh, topic is much too important to let it just go in silence. So I will, I'll start the conversation. I know I, I got this um, report uh, and, and tried to read it, it's a lot, um, it's a lot to try and understand. Um, so I, I emailed the chief and asked for a time to sit down with him and just go over it, um, hopefully face to face if he's comfortable with that. Um, and uh, just really get a better understanding. There were some new terms in there that I wasn't um, familiar with. Um, and maybe the chief can uh, answer my question with that. Um, I, and I'm, I'm just forgetting the vocabulary, but they were um, non-sworn officers that would help with the community outreach. I'm, I'm trying to, to, to say it uh, right, am I?
We do have several community service officers that are non-sworn in the field, so they handle things like traffic accident reports and, you know, non-emergency, non-safety crime reporting issues, so they can help take workload off of sworn police officers. Um, we don't have any full-time career CSOs, we have part-time CSOs. So one of the recommendations is perhaps we should explore adding capacity there as well um, to kind of take some of that workload off of the officers and allow officers to focus more on violent crime, for example.
Hmm.
So I do think that's a good recommendation also.
Yeah, so, so that aspect of it was really intriguing to me. Um, and, and I guess I, I just want to tell counselors that I, uh, there's a lot going on here. I want to give it the time and attention that it needs, it's such a serious topic. Um, and so reaching out to the chief to set aside time to just really dig in and, and find out what's gonna be best for our community um, and learn all that. And I, and I know it doesn't go, um, I see the emails about Counselor Gonzalez and Counselor Hoist, Wards, they got a lot going on out there and going to those neighborhood associations, hearing from folks. Um, so I'm just trying to really take this um, uh, seriously and really give it the time and attention it needs.
A- and that's why I'm asking for it, whether you think it makes it as a council priority that we could focus substantial attention or, you know, attention on it, we got a big, we got a plate full. But I'm, I'm thinking if this doesn't get on the plate, i- it's just not uh, it, we won't get a start on this thing. And I think we desperately need to over the next uh, year to five years, uh, which ta- tends to be our priority planning window. Would you all be okay with that going on the priority list? Okay? Everybody okay? Uh, sorry, Jose?
Oh, yeah, Mayor, I, yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'm in support of that. And our two, the two neighborhood associations that I attend regularly, well, now I'm turn, turn at the room regularly. You know, they um.
Just gets harder, man.
Yeah, they uh, they're number one thing is safety right now. You know, as I, um, as we, as I'm listening to them, um, it's all based on that. They're starting to feel um, less safe than before. And, you know, we recently gave an award to Eduardo Angulo in, in the Home and Family Council.
Yep.
You know, and uh, and of all, because of all their, we recognize him for all their efforts in North Gate Park. But those efforts were only really, if they were prompted because of the lack of safety of what was happening in that park and the surrounding. So, you know, we're recognizing for what he did, but it, the reason why he did it is because of how unsafe the neighbors felt, you know? So this is important to them.
Great, thank you, Jose. Okay, well, then we'll add that uh, to, you, for your review again in January. This isn't the end of the line for any of these ideas. Um. Anybody? Got something, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was lying, back in my chair relaxing, I couldn't get to the uh, to the unmute button. You know, um, i- it seems to me like, uh, and I'm speaking really to Colleen and the staff, it'd be nice to get some sort of uh, metrics and measurements, you know? Here's our goals. Well, what have we done? You know, here's our goal on increasing, I'm just picking this out of the, for example, increasing multifamily housing. How have we followed that? Here's our goal for all the things that we mentioned in our plan, where are we? If we're just saying this is our goal, we need to have feedback. Uh, um, how do we measure it? What are we measuring? Uh, what's the uh, uh, improvement in, you know, whatever area that we're looking to see improvements? How do we measure?
I'm gonna just pitch this little document. I, I thought this gave some very interesting.
Yeah, I, I.
Metrics and, and uh, you know, subjective as well as objective analysis on our, on our outcomes on some of this.
I, I don't disagree, Mr. Mayor, but we're gonna still need, now we're, we haven't really started implementing a lot of these programs. And we're gonna need some, some feedback. I see uh, City Manager has. I see City Manager has his hand up now.
There he is.
Thank you. One of our organizational priorities is developing performance measures that could be used by council, used by the community and used by the organization to track our progress, report on our progress, to to provide some quantitative measures in an easy to find location to go with the the narrative and some of the numbers that are in the in the community report and in our in our annual budget document.
Great, great. Yeah, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not sure on this one if it's if this is, I know it's kind of getting into Mr. Powers' lane a little bit, but I feel like our communication strategy or overall delivery of communications has been lagging behind where the council wants to see it. And I know there's been some personnel changeover and stuff over the last couple of years. But, you know, one of the things that really struck me about the community survey is just the just the sheer lack of understanding of what we're actually doing. And our ability to communicate what we're actually doing is critical. And I would like to see some sort of goal regarding communication and outreach to the community relating to the work that we're doing.
Yeah, it's been an ongoing concern. I think maybe reemphasizing it makes sense to me. Trevor?
Yeah, actually, I think this is a great topic, Counselor Hoy. It just came up at the last Neighborhood Association meeting that I'm at. The budgets for the Neighborhood Association to do their communication is pretty small, something like five hundred dollars a year, which doesn't cover mailing for, you know, one Neighborhood Association. So I would like to look at that as well. I think it's very important.
Okay. So communications, city communications would, I think it's been on before. It may be embedded in there somewhere, but it's it's been an ongoing issue. And I think just reemphasizing it or asking for a new metric or something that lets us see this. And and Trevor points to one that may be a metric that would be abundantly worthwhile is a couple thousand bucks for each of the neighborhood groups to just help communicate our story. That alone popping up might be a a metric that would help us put out the a clearer picture of what we're doing. I I know I talked to the newspaper reporter from The Statesman today. She's not the City Hall reporter, she's the breaking news reporter, which, you know, really made me realize we're not we're not on the cutting edge here all the time. In fact, often we don't want to be all the breaking news in town, but that that we're not getting that kind of coverage. So we really got to keep working on our own, how do we tell our own story? Just to keep that information flow going. Yeah, Vanessa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support giving adequate funding to our neighborhood groups. But at the same time, I mean, I see the same individuals, my neighborhood group, every month like clockwork. They are fully aware, as Counselor Phillips and Counselor Leon and Counselor Anderson know, I nerd out at those meetings and I regularly bring a slideshow to share all the work that the Nicole Ootses and the Gretchen Bennetts of the world are doing to address homelessness. I think that's great and I think those are talking points we can roll out to neighborhood associations. And I I trust that every single counselor is doing that. I think we need to expand our repertoire beyond neighborhood associations to include the Rotary Clubs, the fraternal organizations, you know, the Chamber of Commerce. There's so many worthy groups in the area who would love to hear from us directly. What are we doing to address homelessness? And we have made a lot of progress. When I told someone the other day, as Counselor Anderson mentioned earlier, we have well over seven thousand people in public housing right now. And just imagine where those folks would be without that support. So I I just encourage all of us to keep getting your, keep putting yourself out there to let people know what we're doing. And perhaps, you know, work with our staff to help identify what are some groups that we haven't talked to in a long time? When was the last time we gave a presentation to Latino Business Alliance? Something like that. So I think there's a lot we can do grassroots and through money, through social media, through Nextdoor even. I often hesitate to go into Nextdoor. Those conversations, it's a downward spiral before you know it, people. I mean, it's a, it can be a dark place. But that is a great opportunity to talk to people who do not have the level of information that we have as Counselor Hoy. So diplomatically put it, which I so appreciate. So I just wanted to stop and pause and comment there. Thanks.
I, you know, just to just to follow up on that, I noticed in one of these documents, I couldn't get to it real quickly, it does call for one of our goals being more engagement by counselors with their neighborhood groups. I know for my own, from my own experience, nine years on the council, I'd go to six neighborhood groups a month. And it was always fun, it was always interesting, but it is challenging. And I think that I I really appreciate your description of some of the things you're doing. And there are, yeah, it's it's a lot of work trying to carry the message. But with all of us carrying part of it, you're you're really right, is is everybody agree? Might be a thing as people say they want to run for council, you may want to ask them, are you willing to give up a couple of nights a month that go to these neighborhood groups? So I think some don't have a clue what they're signing up for. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify my earlier comments to make sure that I was understood. I'm talking about an overall communication strategy and 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 delivery. I think that neighborhoods are one small piece of that, but I wasn't specifically talking about neighborhood groups. I love the idea of increasing their communications budget so we can, so they can outreach to more of their neighbors to increase their attendance. I think that'd be great. But I was talking about an overall communication.
I thought your comments were really clear, Chris. I think it just, you can see it prompts a detail. We can go in pretty deep, pretty quick, so. But I
Thank you.
Powers got it, yeah. Okay, Colleen, I'm going to turn it back to you. I think we've covered, unless there's something else.
Actually, I think Counselor Stapleton's hand is up.
Yeah, well, quickly, I didn't want to let this opportunity go by without talking about continuing our work with DEI and the importance there. It's it's really hard for me personally to know actionable items that we can do. But I think one of the actionable items is bringing it up at a meeting like this and making sure that it stays in the conversation. I'm really looking forward to our training that we have coming up in a week or so. I'm really excited to learn more about. I've I've asked the city manager to send me the resume of our new hire for DEI just to get to know that position a little bit better and the person who's going to be working for the city to help with that. Hearing all the different efforts that we're doing, trying to diversify our hiring, not only at fire and police, but also here at the city. But again, so important for me that that equity piece in so many different lenses, whether it's in how we divert funds to help with our unhoused, which are our most vulnerable members of our of our city right now. But how we look at equity in transportation and how we invest our money in transportation equity as well. So just so many different ways that we can do that. I wanted to make sure to bring it up and voice it here that we that we continue to make that a priority as well.
Well, we have, and we've hired a DEI coordinator and it's been, it is and has been on the list. I think that's, we continue to work on that. It'll be interesting for all of us, I think, as you look forward to equity as you deal with our transportation, equity as you try to explain to people why their fuel bills are going up, all the other issues that come with this. They're going to be very tricky, very interesting. Because equity is not, isn't always what people want to address, you know?
It's sometimes very, very challenging and
I think it will be. I I think I I look forward to seeing how you try to address it. It ain't just politics. Okay, what else? Anything else? Okay, Colleen, what else do you need?
All right, well, we've got about twenty minutes left. I'm going to just repeat back at a very high level the conversation. So number one, staying the course with homelessness, continuing with the Housing First model, taking on that lens of preventing, managing, ending homelessness, consideration of mobile crisis unit and sobering center, thinking about increasing micro shelters and safe park areas. Implementing our Salem, so one one thing that's important implementing our Salem is actually funding implementation of our Salem. So the ask of staff was sequence list of projects, identifying the critical path there, including public input opportunities and ensuring that we're including climate action recommendations in that implementation. There was, it looked like unanimous support for the bond as a priority. Revenue sustainability, I think we could probably use a little bit more conversation around revenues to sustainability, particularly with respect to the police staffing conversation that immediately followed, bringing up revenue sustainability. And then community communication as well as community engagement. So that conversation was both about telling our own story. I actually really like what Counselor Anderson said related to metrics and measures. So that's also around how are we telling our story? How are we communicating our progress to the community and what we're actually doing, right? But also then, who are we engaging with in the community and and who are we actually telling our story to? So the very high level, those were the big topics that we covered tonight, which is a lot, right? That's a lot.
Well, I heard some big topics, I heard some subtopics. I expect you to put them together where there's actually a big topic and then where one or two people have an opinion. Be honest enough to say that's what's going on.
So I'm wondering, Steve, is there anything, are there any other topics you want to make sure that we dig into this evening? Or anything you want to circle back to based on that list?
Based upon the the discussion this evening, certainly when we come come back to you and and as as you, as a budget committee, get into the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three budget, you know, the the trade offs and and the choices that will have to be made in order to, you know, advance some of the discussion this evening. And then also, as you discussed with implementation of our sale and some of the revenue, for example, might be more of a sequence where we focus first on on the bond and and have some plan, some discussion of 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 operating revenue, whether that's for police, public safety, or homelessness or both is is something that would then follow a successful bond measure. It's kind of sequencing that out. So it is perhaps more achievable than than trying for it all at once, although that, you know, ultimately is is your choice as as the policymakers for for the city and and for the community.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, hey, Vanessa?
Yeah, sure, sorry about it, folks. So earlier, my my Zoom feed completely dropped out right when we were in the middle of Counselor Hoy speaking. So I missed a chunk of our meeting tonight. So I just want to make sure that are we dropping anything from our list of priorities are as of this evening? Or are we simply just talking about it and we'll revisit it in twenty twenty two? Because that my impression is that all we did was talk tonight. We no decisions were made about taking items off or on our council list. But I got really paranoid when I dropped off the call for about five minutes. I want to make sure.
I I think that's a good, a good way to describe it, Vanessa. There are a few new things to talk about, but this really will be resolved in January as we try to pass this thing. You know, right now, it's probably a little bigger than it should be, might have too many things, might have some stuff we want to push out, you know, that kind of thing, maybe just the fine tuning. But I didn't hear anything being just absolutely wiped out or or not moving forward, did?
That was my, I just wanted to be sure because I hate missing, I missed a chunk of the call and being really vital. I appreciate the conversation. It's so great to be able to have a good brainstorming session with you and our entire council.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor, for councils and and the viewers, we will now take this, you know, this feedback, this information, this very good discussion that that you've had and and put together some specificity to it. And perhaps, as the mayor just said, some 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 sequencing as far as it might not all be achievable in in twenty twenty two, perhaps it's twenty twenty three. And then also, we'll be very transparent regarding, you know, what was heard and and then as a result, what may not have any additional specificity in what in what will for your your consideration in January. And we'll have that, we'll have that draft, you know, for you before your next opportunity to, as a as a council, to set the policy agenda for twenty twenty two.
The the one thing, Steve, that I think would be very helpful as we head into this in January is that sustainability discussion be picked up along the way as you go in and put this together. What what are the sustainability issues that are associated with any of the ideas we have? What do they look like? And and that doesn't mean don't do them in this budget or any other budget. But it does say we've got to figure out a funding strategy that takes this out at least five years, if not ten years, to to make some of this stuff work. You've just got to have some sort of, you know, how are you going to get from here to there? And and how can you keep people? If you're going to hire people like hire cops, how are you going to keep them? If you're going to hire social workers, how are you going to keep them? If you're going to, you know, and the list goes on and on. All this stuff we talk about costs. And we need to understand that, I think. I think that should be a factor that is built into all of them as one of our priorities. But the real deliverable is can we track it and deal with it during a budget cycle?
Certainly.
Makes it hard for everybody. This is not, this is the stuff where the rubber hits the road.
We we can make sure that the the staff report includes that sustainability component.
I think that would be helpful. I I really do, not not to hurt any of these ideas, but to help us decide how to how to phase it or how to how to meet the challenge, you know, how how much do we need? Do we need two bucks on the utility bill? Or do we need a major levy? Or, you know, those kinds of things that 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 we'll be taking up over the next year. Okay? Great, well, thank you very much. That was really interesting. See you when, next Monday? Is this every Monday now? When do we meet again, Steve?
Next Monday.
Okay, next Monday night. And we're going to be on this again, huh? We're not getting together yet, huh?
Not not quite.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to that someday. Good night. This is adjourned.